We'll start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll just say a good morning and welcome to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners work session. It's Monday, September 11th, 2023. All right, now.
Okay, well, I was going to give you an update on the ARPA SLFRF money, where we are on that. And for the public, ARPA stands for American Rescue Plan Act. And SLFRF stands for state and local fiscal recovery funds. We received $34,355,895. And what I thought I would do is just go through where we are on the projects that have been approved for this money. I'm going to start with what's been completed and then work our way down. And you will notice I've got the, on the screen, we have the project listed, just a brief description of the project, the department, the status of it, the approved amount, the expenses that have been paid as of August 31st. That does not mean that is exactly where the progress of the project is. That just means that is, this column are the expenses that were paid as of that date, the balance remaining, and then the percentage of the project that's been paid. We will start with the completed projects. And I just thought I would go down these one by one and just mention them. The voting poll book system replacement for the elections office. Planning for the 707 Quincy and the courthouse projects. Detained body scan, detainee body scanner, that was for the jail. Courthouse entrance security, the sheriff's office. Nutanix platform purchase for IT. UPS batteries for the sheriff's department. Mobile communications vehicle for emergency management. Ballistic vests. Lake Shawnee campground renovation. Roofing project for the jail. Mini train replacement. FOP premium pay. And CWA premium pay. Valeo mental health allocation. That was in addition to their normal allocation. And the DOC premium pay. Those are the completed projects. They total $5,939,362. That is 17% of the total award. Any questions on those projects?
No.
Okay, we'll go on next down to the, the active projects. And, and why I'm saying active, these are ones that are in the process. They're going along pretty smoothly at this point. And, you know, there's partial payments on them. The first is the consultant for ARPA, and that's with Whit O'Briens. Next is audit finance admin costs. That is part of Andrea Forbes' salary for the administration of this program. DA backlog, legal assistant payroll costs. Then we have just the, the bank charges for the COVID account. Because we have a separate bank account for this, and this are just the normal bank charges. Courtroom gallery seating and podium. The courthouse renovation project. This one, you will see that it's showing only 30% paid. But there again, these are the expenses that were paid through August 31st. That doesn't mean that is exactly where the project is. There's usually a certain amount of, of time delay. I believe we've paid one more payment since this, no? But there's retainage on that, too. We also retain a certain percentage. Network distribution switches. Remote worker technology. Polling place sanitizing and cleaning. Parks and playgrounds. Now that, again, it just shows 1% is paid. That doesn't mean that they have not started projects, but that is all that was paid through August 31st. Boiler replacement for the jail. Nurse navigation program. And DOC pay differential. So these are all ones that are in active status. What has been paid on those to date is $9,399,432. Any questions on any of those?
Did any of these come in under budget? I mean, there was a certain amount approved and then actual?
There have been some, especially on the completed ones.
Yeah.
And, and on those completed ones, the approved amount has been changed to the amount that was actually paid.
Right.
I, you know, just looking at this, some of these that have uneven dollar amounts that are completed, that means that we changed that approved amount to the actual cost. Because they would have been, the approved amount would have originally been, you know, a rounded number. In the, in the active column, those are probably all the same approved amount that was originally approved because they aren't completed yet.
Do we feel like most of these that are active are on, on schedule? Or do we have some that are dragging a little bit?
I believe they're, I believe they're all on schedule. You know, there's, and I think these ones that are in the active status are moving right along. Do you both agree? And that's why they're just so, show active. The ones that we have other concerns or issues with will come later after these. The next group are the ones that are kind of in, in process, but not really in an active status yet. The EOC restroom renovation, that, we've received bids on those, and they are pending review of the professional services committee. I know they are getting that meeting scheduled. The next are a filtration system for the health department. They have purchased some. It's pending purchase of additional fans, epifans. Digital marquee signs, this is also for the health department, pending the bid award. They've received awards and they're pending, awarding the bid and, and looking into the electrical that's required for those signs. So nothing has been paid to date. The 707 Quincy renovation and elevator. This is just pending the final payment. We now have the final payment. It's, as of the end of August, that final payment had not been paid, which includes some retainage. And then also the purchase of the sign. Included in that project was the purchase for the sign on the exterior of this building. And that has not been determined what we're doing on that yet. So that we will, we will go ahead and pay that final payment on that. So if you add this, because we now do have that final payment that will be paid, I think there's like $2,800 or something, around $2,000 that's being set aside for the sign. But the rest of it will all be paid and completed.
On that project, are we finished with the whole punch list, everything?
I'll let Nilda address that.
Nilda Henning, Director of Facilities. Our one-year warranty is, I think, October 1st. And they are aware of the issues and have been coming over and doing repairs for the warranty items. So we're in progress of taking care of that, yes.
Thank you.
So since this project is, is essentially completed, if you would add that to the completed projects above, then that total would go up to $8,457,090, which would be 25% of the awarded money. So I would say, you know, for all practical purposes, we have 25% of the money has been paid out for completed projects. The next line here is the DOC annex HVAC replacement. That, the project is being reevaluated. The bids came in much higher, I mean extremely high compared to this. So they're reevaluating what they're going to do on that. Or kind of that one, I think, I guess I can say is pretty much up in the air right now.
Good morning, gentlemen. Eve Kendall, Department of Corrections. The bid we, well, if you want to go back in history, we were approved for funding $850,021. We were approved for ARPA funding or consideration. We went through a long process of trying to figure out what we needed. Ended up getting an engineer to create plans for us. And that's where we spent the, the $24,500 was for the engineering. Made the plans and everything, went out for bid. Was extremely high, 3.5 million. Yes, sir. That's what we did, too. So, and even the contractors, even the lowest bid contractor was surprised at the final bid. I talked to them last week, actually. So what we are currently doing, we're reevaluating our current system. We do have some pieces and parts that we've been limping along because we thought we were getting a new system. It's kind of like when you're thinking that you're going to go out and get a new car. You don't necessarily go out and put new tires on your, you know, car you currently have because you're going to be getting rid of it. So we've been limping along on some of the pieces. I know that, I mean, I can go through some of the pieces that we know that we need to, we need a new boiler. We didn't put it in the current boiler project because we thought we were getting a new system. We needed a new DOAS. We have two. So we're working on one right now. There's some heat pumps that we need to replace. So what I'm going through right now with our current vendor that we have a maintenance contract with, SAMCO, and we're evaluating and prioritizing what needs to be done before winter hits. Because it heats our system and it cools our system. It's a redundant kind of thing. So that we can make sure that we have a temperature control through, you know, the seasons and get a few more years out of our current system. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to use that remaining funds, the $825,000, to do some replacement of pieces and parts and services that way. So that we do have good, you know, building system moving forward for at least the next four or five years.
Is this for the whole building or is this?
Yes, sir. Part of the reason why the 3.5 million was so high was because it wasn't a new build, I was told. Because they had to go in and like cut through ceilings and, you know, and had to be a little bit more gentle than when you have an open framed building that you can just put things in. And part of it was some safety issues that, you know, once you build, or you renovate so much of a building, you have to go into a new code or, you know, the current code instead of what you currently have. So part of that was like putting some different types of safety devices up on this, on the roof and catwalk kind of stuff and so on and so forth, which was, that was $700,000 just for a catwalk. But anyway, I digress. So what we're planning to do is like right now, I'm getting, I have one bid for a new pump that we need replaced, and it's five, $8,000. We have a new boiler that I'm getting a pricing on, that kind of thing. So hopefully we'll be able to use some of this money for that instead of trying to either use our budget or, or contingency fund or anything like that. But that's where we are with the project. We're going to try and make it work like we always do with the best funding and, and project that we can do and be efficient with our process. I stand for any questions.
So, I mean, we paid an engineer $24,500.
Yes, sir.
And they designed something that was much more. I mean, was it the design so much as it was, I mean, it seems like maybe they were trying to do more than we needed?
Not necessarily. Our current system has a bunch of, it's, we were trying to replace our heat pumps, pump system with units on top of the, the roof to be more efficient and have like zones. Part of the problem is that the building was renovated from a printing company to inmate housing. And so we used some of the system that was already there. It really wasn't, you know, met, it really wasn't for the needs of housing people compared to, you know, working eight to five kind of thing. So part of it was make it more efficient. Part of it was making it to where we had more air exchange per CDC. You know, making the best air quality that you can with all the different communicable diseases and so on and so forth. That's why we were able to hit the ARPA funding. Because we're getting more air exchange on an hourly basis compared to what we currently do. So part of it was that. But again, the, the major price was that they were having to cut through ceilings and replace ceilings. Cut through, we have a lot of brick and mortar because it's a security, you know, facility. So it wasn't just, you know, going through drywall or, you know, some wooden ceiling kind of stuff. They were actually having to cut through metal and beams and so on and so forth. And then replace that kind of stuff, too.
Thank you. What were you hoping to save? You said, you talk about efficiencies. How much were we hoping to save by going to this new system?
I can't tell you exactly dollar-wise what we'd be saving. I can tell you that we, it is the, from what I'm being told, it was much more efficient. In the long run, I mean, it would take a while to, to make our money back because of, you know, but then we were thinking it was only going to be 850,000. We weren't thinking it was 3.5.
How long have we been in the Shawnee County Annex?
I believe 15 years.
So by replacing the system that was there with a like system, what would that have cost us? Just to go right back to what we have.
I couldn't tell you that, sir. I'm sorry. I can come back with that with, for you.
I mean, I, I understand that you, you know, we, you want to know what is the most energy efficient. I have zone control. I understand the CDC. I actually appreciate that because that's, that goes to health safety of the inmates that we're housing. But if we're spending 300 million to save 300,000, and I use that just as an example, not as the actual numbers, that doesn't make a lot of financial sense. And so being the most of energy efficient may not, I mean, it may never pay for itself.
Well, and we were thinking that we were getting a better product when we thought it was going to be less than a million versus a 3.5. But basically, that's what we're going to be doing now is looking at the parts that we need to replace with the current system, keeping the current system. Just some of the stuff is aging out, just like, you know, anything in our households anymore. It used to be you could buy a refrigerator and it would last 15, 20 years. Now it's all plastic parts and you're lucky if it lasts 10 to five, they tell you five to 10 years now for household items. You know, so part of it is that we're going to be replacing our existing, parts of our existing system and keeping that system running.
Now, as we transition from the heat of the summer into the cool of winter, are your boilers going to make it through this winter season?
The top priority is replacing one boiler, sir. I'm waiting for bids to find out how much that's going to cost.
I mean, I just don't.
We have two boilers that run that system over there.
I mean, because if we get too far into it, we're going to be looking at a contingency, emergency purchase.
Yes, sir. I understand that. That's why Friday, I had to think of what day it was. Friday I had talked to, I had the vice president of SAMCO and another of their administrative, well, not administrator, but one of their managers. We came over and we looked at the system and we, and we're prioritizing what needs to replace to keep it running, to make it efficient still. But we need to make sure that it's running so that we can make it through the next year or two or three.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve.
Thank you, sirs.
Okay, the next project that we have here is a courthouse UTV. That has been received. We have not made payment on it yet, or certainly had not as of the end of August. And then there also, she's working on getting the attachments, the snow plow and the spreader. The IT complex, the training complex IT upgrades for the sheriff's office. I think there's some, I don't know how to even word it. There's some reevaluation going on there with that, too.
Morning, Commissioner Mark Price, IT. So when we first initially worked with the sheriff on coming up with this project, we were looking at doing a fiber to that location. Due to some other construction projects in the area, after we originally came up with a price, we were made aware of some situations underground where there were some rock ledges that would make getting fiber down that location more expensive than we, we had anticipated. So we started evaluating whether other options are to get some sort of connectivity or improve connectivity down to the sheriff's gun range. And we, we currently have been working with a couple, with a vendor, trying to come up with an estimate for a wireless connection. We have a similar connection that goes from the courthouse to Beddys right now. We believe that there will be an option to do that, to go from the courthouse to one of the sheriff radio towers and then down to the gun range. The radio tower gives us enough height to where we, we don't have to build a huge tower at the gun range, which becomes problematic because of the airport. What we're working on is trying to get what frequencies are on the tower right now, where other equipment is on the tower, so we know what equipment we can place on the tower to then do that relay to the gun range. And so that's kind of where we're at this point. Honestly, the savings of money on the IT side, I think, will be beneficial because I, I know the sheriff, I think, had some other IT upgrades they wanted to do to increase what, what they could do for training down there. So I don't know what those upgrades would actually totally cost. But I, I think once we're, if this all works out, I think this will be a much better, more inclusive project for not just connectivity, but also features and functionality in the gun range for IT. And I, I would hope here, before the end of this year, and I know we have a 24 commitment deadline, but I would think by the end of this year, we should have a hard cost on what the IT upgrades to get better connectivity to the gun range would be.
Mark, so this would be quite a savings going wireless over a hardwired system?
I believe so. I, I, I would think we can do it. From, from the preliminary numbers I'm being told, even with getting someone up on the tower, I think we'd be in the IT connectivity side, a fourth of this. I think we'd be around $50,000 is what I'm, what I'm being told. I'm, I'm always hesitant to throw numbers out because I've not had anyone give me a quote. But that's, that's kind of what I'm being led to understand.
Be good. All right. Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Okay, the next is the, these next items from beginning here and all the way down are the new items that were just added during the budget process, the capital outlay and the budget process. So these have obviously not been started yet, but we will go through them. The new items that have been, there are, let's see, one, two, three, four, five items, and they total 1,661,000. The first one is the 911 center renovation, includes consoles and additional space. The 911 backup center upgrades. Quartz data center. Quartz furniture. Pony field turf replacement. Those are the four, the, the projects that were added during that process. The item down here, clear at the bottom, says contingency for projects still in process. The Spark Committee allocated a certain amount for projects that went over. The amount that was agreed upon was up to 5% of the project amount with a cap of 150,000. Now, that was just for the Spark Committee. The items would not have to come back to the Spark Committee if they went over by that amount. They would still have to come back to the commission if, you know, a contract was being altered or changed or a project budget or something like that. This was just through the Spark Committee itself. So for that amount, that totals $686,516. Now, as projects are completed and come in within the budgeted amount, then that amount would decrease as it goes along. This was just, especially as you know, especially early on, we were coming back, everything was coming back higher. And so rather than the Spark Committee meeting each and every time something came back at a higher price, we just kind of set up this contingency for those situations. So like I say, that is something that is just for the, the Spark Committee has allocated those funds for that purpose. That is nothing that the commission has, has taken any action on. So if you look down here, here are totals. The total approved amount for all of the projects right now is $34,294,367. That makes $61,528 remaining to be allocated. Of that, 17 million, almost 17,800, has been paid through August 31st, which is 52% of the total project amounts. If you would take the contingency amount and add the 61,000 that's remaining to be allocated, that would be $748,000 that is not allocated to a project itself. You'll also notice the bottom line down here is interest received on this bank account. The interest received, well, let me start it out by when the, with the CARES Act money, they really suggested it not be an interest-bearing account. That was not the case with ARPA money. With ARPA money, it could be in an interest-bearing account, so we have had it in an interest-bearing account. Through the end of August, we had received $1,279,000 in interest. That will continue now as the balance, as, as money is paid out and the balance goes down, of course, the balance that is receiving interest goes down also. But we still expect that to be, you know, to, to grow. That money does not have to be spent in the same way the ARPA money had to be. In fact, there's really not any restrictions on that money. It can be used however the county would see fit.
So that, that interest, is that, when we get our quarterly financial updates from you, is, is that included in the revenues that are reported in there?
No, it is not. No. What is included in that is just on our operating account. This is a separate bank account, so no, that is not included in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Betty, the remaining amount to be allocated and the contingency, those have to be committed by 2025?
They have to be committed by the end of 2024 and paid out, completed and paid out by the end of '26.
So.
So they have to be obligated. You can have a, you would have to have a contract or something like that, you know, by the end of '24.
And then just as a running total, again, as of the date of this presentation, the interest, the remaining amount in the contingency totaled $2,026,000. the interest, the remaining amount in the contingency totaled $227,322.
Right. Now, I do have several projects I would like to look at using the interest for. I'll just throw that out, and this has not gone through the Spark Committee at all yet. But we are looking at some budget software that we would use a little bit of this interest for. I think that just for the transparency for the public, it would be beneficial. I think it would be very time-saving for the departments. And I am looking at that. I'm also looking at software for, grant software, which would include a search, a search component and grant management component. Those are minor compared to this amount of money, but those are two items that I would, will come to back to you later and suggest that we would use some of this interest money for. Any other questions? For me or for?
Any other questions?
Don't, not that I can.
I can't think of any, so, thank you. Either of you have any comments or?
Not so much a comment about the numbers that are presented today, but just in terms of these projects that are undergoing, that we're undergoing right now. The courthouse project, I think it's probably time for us to do another tour of the courthouse during one of these work sessions.
Sure.
If you'd be amenable to doing that at a future work session, I think it'd be good for us to all walk over there again together and kind of.
That would be good.
So.
All right.
Other than that, this is a good update, thank you.
Thank you very much. I had a question on the, a project that was completed, campground, Shawnee County Camp, campground. I haven't been out there to see it yet. I was just wondering how it turned out and.
Morning Commissioners, Jess Rakestraw, Parks and Rec.
Maybe that's another tour, we can go out and take a look at that.
Same day, I don't care.
We can, yeah, we can do the same day, that'd be fun.
Yeah, I would encourage it. It turned out really well in our book. You know, I think the one thing that we wish we could do right now is make grass grow, but beyond that, everything turned out really well. We're really happy with how that whole project went and our contractors and everything.
Now, each slip now has electricity, water, sewer?
Yeah, on the north half of the campground, everything's got water, electric and sewer. Concrete pads, it's gorgeous, so.
You run out, take a look at that.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hopefully, the rain helps with that grass situation.
All right. All right, I really don't have anything else unless you guys want to discuss something.
Well, you know, since we're talking parks and rec, let's talk about the playgrounds. Because there is money allocated there for playgrounds and parks and a lot of it has not been spent yet, so.
Well, it hasn't been spent, but it's mostly encumbered. So, because it is parks and playgrounds, that, that delivery takes several months. So, I can say almost all of it is encumbered. The total I've got is actually $610,000 as far as being encumbered. So, those are just waiting to be delivered and installed until they could be paid.
Do you know what parks?
Yeah. So, we've got Sims Park, Ward Parkway Park, Washburn Park, Medford Park, Sherwood Park, Oakwood Hills, Chesney Park, Jayhawk Park, Clyde O'Bracken, Horseshoe Bend. And then we had some concrete work and signs and stuff. So, Dornwood Park had some interpretive signage and a picnic table and some sway benches that we're putting in at various parks. And that's the maj, that's the total.
So, is it mainly just play equipment or is it the rubber matting and stuff to go through?
It varies by park. We've got some that have got pour-in-place, we've got some with turf, we've got some with engineered wood fiber. It's kind of the assortment based on where it's at and in relation to other parks.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have no other questions about these projects. Next thing on the agenda is public comment. I don't know if we have anyone here for public comment. Or administrative comment.
Nothing for me.